The moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Babb.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everyone who is here this afternoon and also thank you to those who were able to attend the installation ceremony held earlier this afternoon that we were able to have Ms. Henderson installed this afternoon and she's joining us this evening. So, welcome. She's representing District 6 and we're very glad to have her with us this evening. And also, Ms. Babb is attending electronically. Can you wave? You can hear us? Okay, she can hear us. So, she is, she'll be with us through, through that means this evening. Just a few reminders of upcoming meetings. We have a joint education meeting and they will hold their initial meeting of the year next Monday, December 7th at 5:30 PM in this room. Also, the naming facilities committee will hold their first meeting on December 14th at 10 AM. And there's a policy review meeting scheduled for Wednesday, January 20th at 1:30 PM. And all of those meetings are open to the public and will be held in this boardroom. I just wanted to remind everyone of our vision and mission statement. Our vision statement is to grow lifelong learners who contribute their talents, strengths, and skills to build a stronger community. And our mission statement is to provide excellent and accessible learning opportunities that empower all students to realize their full potential. So, thank you to this board and to our entire staff for all their efforts in, in working toward implementing our vision and, and our goals and our mission state, and our organizational mission. Do we have any changes to this agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? We have lots of motions. Let's go with, I know I heard Mr. Watson and I think maybe Mr. McMillan seconded. So, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and I'd like to refer to Superintendent Thomas for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to begin by adding my welcome and the welcome on behalf of our staff to you, Mrs. Henderson, in saying we look forward to working with you. And on behalf of your district, all the students, families, and employees of Knox County Schools, so welcome aboard and, and just in time to start with budget and virus and everything else that's going on. So, you picked, picked a good time to jump in. So, thank you. I'd like to also remind everyone of an important meeting that will take place next week. The Disparities in Education Outcome Steering Committee will host a virtual community meeting on Thursday, December 10th at 5:30 PM. This meeting will focus on topics including academic achievement, impacts related to COVID-19, and the virtual learning program. It will be livestreamed on our website, www.knoxschools.org/kcstv. As board members know, eliminating disparities is one of the three goals of our strategic plan and the DEO Steering Committee plays an essential role in this work. I look forward to the meeting and hope that many of our families, students, and employees will be able to watch the livestream. Finally, I'd like to point out that we're on a countdown on winter break. So, I know everyone's excited about that. So, Friday, December 18th will be a half day for both in-person and virtual students. Even with the challenges of this semester, I am extremely proud of our students, teachers, administrators, health professionals, and other staff for rising to the challenge that we've had all semester long. Thinking back to our first day in August, I know how many of us would have not expected, I guess, our district could continue offering in-person and virtual instruction throughout the semester. But, knock on wood, we're close to getting that done. This was only possible because of the incredible efforts of our employees, the support of our families, and the tremendous perseverance of our students. So, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who made this semester happen. And I'm already looking forward to a great second semester, which begins on Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes my report for this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do we have any questions for the superintendent? All right. Okay, we'll move into discuss, I'm sorry, Ms. Christie.
Yeah, I'm just, Superintendent, if you could just speak a little to the current situation in our schools. I know a lot of people are concerned based on the Health Department's report today.
Based on the what, Ms. Christie?
What they heard from the Health Department today.
Oh.
From the daily report. If you could just speak a little.
In terms of the quarantine.
And the, well, the metrics and how we're doing as far as.
We've seen the numbers increase pretty dramatically in Knox County. Also, we're seeing numbers increase in our schools. As you know, we, the month of November has been pretty active in terms of schools that have gone red because of quarantines and positive cases and so forth. So, based on what the medical professionals are saying, it's, it's probably gonna get worse before it gets better. And we're continuing to monitor that. I know we had a middle school and secondary school principal meeting today, virtual meetings, and heard from our, our principals. I know there's a lot of concern from principals that, about absences, about teacher absences and filling vacancies, a lot of concern about staff having to cover multiple classes, not getting their planned time, and things of that nature, which actually puts a stress, you know, on, on our, on our, on our people and on the school system. So, we've been able to maintain most of the schools all, all semester long, but we have seen an increase there. I think the quarantine period, the CDC has made a recommendation that, or it's come out with a statement saying that quarantine period could be shortened. I know Dr. Roswick and Jason Myers have talked to Martha Buchanan, Dr. Buchanan at the Health Department. I know our Health Department is, is, I think, supportive of that, but waiting on some guidance from, from the state, from the Governor's Office, and the State Health Department on that. So, we may see, may see some movement there based on, based on the changes from the CDC. So, we'll continue, like I say, to monitor the situation. We look at our staff absences each day. We look at our fill rates each day. We look at student absences each day. So, one, one factor that's not factored into that and it's not, it's hard to quantify that is all the additional work that teachers are having to do in order to cover classes for colleagues who, who are quarantined and who are absent. But, you know, we know, we know the safest place for our students is, is in schools. So, we're trying our best to, to maintain, maintain that and to be in school each day. But it, I'll have to say it is getting much more challenging. And we're hearing, hearing that from our administrators on a pretty regular basis now. So, and, and we want to try to do as much as we can for our teachers, try to relieve the, the pressure as much as we can. Know Scott and the HR Department's really working on, on substitutes. We continue to hire substitutes. We actually have more substitutes working now than I think we've ever had. But, of course, the absence rate is higher. So, it becomes much more difficult to, to fill positions. So, and we're looking, looking at all of that and trying to make the, the best decisions that we can make for, for our students on a daily basis. And, and we'll continue to do that.
Mr. Watson.
Mr. Thomas, I know that a lot of our community partners out there decided they want to jump in and try to help with virtual students to offer pods and things like that early in the year. And, I mean, even the Knoxville Zoo, I think, put up, put up a pod. I had not heard a lot in the community about folks who are trying to help mitigate the impacts for working parents when schools are going to red for short periods of time. Do, is the school system aware of any resources in the community where people are trying to help mitigate that impact on those parents that are, I know, I know we've been pushing for a long time to say to parents, hey, we need, you need a plan, right, if we go red. But we also know that some parents don't have the option to have a good plan if they don't have access to a lot of resources. So, has the school been, the school system been looking into the community to say what resources out there? And I know it's not our responsibility, but is there a way that we can help make that known to families who are trying to make that plan to say, here's some of the resources you might look into accessing during those periods?
To this point, we have, have not done much in that regard. I, I'll certainly be glad to talk with staff and see if there's some other resources out there that we can provide. I know it's difficult. It's easy to sit here and say, hey, have a plan.
Sure.
When the district goes red. If I'm a working parent, single parent, or even two working parents, guardians, whatever, that, I've gotta go to work. I don't get paid if I don't go to work. So, I know that's a, that's a real challenge. But, we'll, we'll look, look at that a little bit closer and see if there are some ways that we can offer some help to families.
Sure. And I'm not even suggesting that it's KCS that's doing the helping, other than becoming aware of what resources might be out there. I mean, I know the Shore Foundation and the Zoo and others, again, talked about helping for those students who have decided to go virtual the whole semester. I've not necessarily heard a lot of people saying, here's a solution for those kids who are doing something intermittent. But it may be out there and I just don't, I don't know if it is. So, thank you.
Okay. And then we'll, we'll, you know, I think anybody watching, tell your friends if they need a job. We need substitute teachers. So, we have people in our community who are unemployed. And so, if they are qualified and would, would be in a good addition to our team, we do have some openings there. And, and also, as I know Dr. Buchanan is probably just digesting the information and waiting on more guidance from the CDC. So, perhaps we, you know, we can follow up with her and perhaps see if she can be here next week to chat with us about that. So, so we will, we'll check into that since we do actually have some movement and some change based on quarantining protocols. So, I'll follow up on that on behalf of the board. Okay. Any questions on items one or two, contracts, items and contracts one or two? Okay, three or four? Ms. Owen.
I have a question on item C3, the online subscription agreement with DBQ. Is this something new? Is this something our teachers have already been trained to use? Or is this something, something that they will need to be trained to use?
Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a resource our teachers already have in print. This just gives us the opportunity to have digital integration so that the teachers can use a digital version of it.
Okay. And, and the date is October 1st? Or is this, are we doing this retroactively?
We have not sent it out to the teachers or received the product. We did not realize that there was going to be another contract coming with this. So, we had to press pause until we could get board approval.
Okay. So, should we change the date on that? Or, does it, it says it also expires October 1st. So, I wouldn't want it to, to expire earlier than it should.
Is that, are we able to change the date? I'd have to defer to the law department on that one.
Mr. Dupler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We can, we can change dates. You know, the board can certainly approve a contract for, you know, a year term, say, starting, you know, spring semester. The only problem with that might come in crossing fiscal years. And, and I'd have to defer to Mr. McPherson on that issue. So.
Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm not hugely worried about it. I just didn't want it to run out if we're gonna pay for a year contract for it to run out two months early.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I will look into it and try and, thank you.
Okay. Any questions on four or five? Okay, item six. Okay, moving into board policies. Any questions on policy I381, second reading? Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask Dr. Roswick to clarify for us, in looking at this policy, what we are doing is basically holding harmless for EOC scores in student grades. But it still has listed the 10% for grade six through eight. And so, I just want to clarify that that's legislative. If you could talk about that a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, you're correct. So, there are two different bodies that make the, have the rules for that. And you're correct, the General Assembly sets the law for 38, which is the TCAP. And I think they meet again in January and will potentially take that up then. So, the board voted two years ago, three years ago, to use the minimum for those to count. So, the 68 that you're referring to as the 10% would have to be a change. That's the minimum that's currently allowed by the law. If they, if they change that and set that, if they follow what the State Board did for high schools, then they would give the local LEAs the ability to move that down to zero before the test would happen in May. The high, the portion of this one, the high school EOC is, that's controlled actually by the Tennessee State Board of Ed. And they have, it originally was 15 to 25%. And November 6th, that's when they passed the, the DUC of LEAs, the ability to move that down to 0%, which first reading went through on that. And we'll, if it goes through next week, we'll have that down to zero so they won't count. They'll be held harmless and won't count against them in their final grade. There may be more than you wanted. Sorry.
No, no, not at all. So, we are, we are passing the part that we are able to now and we are waiting for the legislature so we can do something more.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, we can't affect the lower grades until they make a move from the state legislature.
Super, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Ms. Henderson?
I do have a question. I didn't think I was gonna speak at all at my first meeting, but here I am. So, to my understanding that the students will be held harmless at 0% for their EOCs, correct? But my concern is the state. Will the state still hold the schools accountable? I just don't want that to hurt our teachers.
Sure.
Or our schools. And will they still use it for the state report card?
So, that's a great question. And there's lots of parts to it. So, let me see if I can try to get to that. So, so the state, in order for them to, okay, so a couple things. So, for, there's a couple pieces that the assessment's currently used in. So, one is for the student grade. And so, the State Board controlled that, gave it back to the local boards to make those decisions. We're doing that. So, I, well, maybe I can use this opportunity. We're in the middle of the testing window right now. And so, some people started EOCs earlier in the week. And so, I've, I know I've received a few emails about saying, why, why wouldn't this take care of kind of before then? And really, it's about the timing of when the State Board made the move. They didn't make the move until November 6th, which meant it couldn't go before this board till the November 1st reading. And then second reading is, is this one coming up. So, what we're gonna try to be clear to families is that even if your student's taking the EOC now, it won't have a negative impact on them. And we have virtual students. There's a whole lot of things with that. So, your question really was on what does that, what does that do for state accountability? So, our district accountability and school accountability, those are actually part of the, of the plan that goes to the state that the state sends to the feds. So, the federal law, the Every Student Succeeds Act, the ESA Act, the, the federal, they would have to move at a federal level to say that states aren't responsible for their plans. So, there's like a lot of pieces to that part on how that accountability. So, our state put together, here's how we want to hold schools and districts accountable. And then feds approve that in order to get federal dollars. So, they would, they would take some action at the federal level to give states that break. And the governor or the commissioner could ask the feds to waive that for the state. And that's what happened last year in the middle of that. And so, they pretty much gave wave across the board. The other piece of that is the, is the teacher evaluation part. And that's the one that we think that we've been told and through conversations with Commissioners' Office and the Governor's Office, the General Assembly will take up in January and feel pretty confident that they'll be able to, you know, give that a pass for this year. So, that part of this, the student accountability that, that leads into that will be then. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Okay. All right, moving on to policy J201. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two clarifying questions. And the first one will go to Mr. Dupler. Could you just give us some information as to why this policy exists? Is it a mandatory policy or is it just a policy within KCS? Does that make sense?
Sorry, I was trying to get my computer to.
No, you're fine.
To go here. It's kind of slow tonight. So, we're talking about J201, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, J201 came about several years ago. I believe, I believe Mr. Oaks had, had, had talked about this at, at the board's last meeting, that it, it came up in response to some school shootings and specifically was, was passed in Knox County schools due to the situation at Central High School. So, your question is, is this a mandatory policy? The, the response would be no, it's not a mandatory policy. It is one that was passed to, to look out for the best interest of all students. It was, was my understanding and still my understanding. It does have to have, and again, I think Mr. Oaks talked about this last time, too, it has to have some type of, of, of measurements, some type of, either in the community or in the schools themselves as far as an elevated nature of, of, of crime. And, and here it specifically talks about weapons and drugs. So, so when we're talking about crime, we're talking about those two, those two issues.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, does that answer?
Yes. I just kind of wanted to bring, bring that knowledge to.
Okay.
To the public room. Cause I know it was in the policy review. But I wanted to bring it here as well. And then my second question, it'll be a clarifying question for you, Superintendent Thomas. In 25, line 25, "And the director of school shall develop administrative procedures so that random, random school student searches are not targeted to individual groups, class, race, gender, school, or geographical areas." What are some of those procedures? And like, what are, what's your procedure to make sure that that doesn't happen?
Good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. Let me just kind of go through the steps for you there. And hopefully that'll answer the questions. And if you've got further questions, we'll try to answer those as well. But first of all, the, the schedule through the principal of the school. And the search does not happen unless the superintendent approves the search for, for the school. So, there are four to seven officers that conduct the random search. Those are officers that are not at the school. And we try to do a random search at least once, one time for each high school and middle school. So, that ensures that all high schools and middle schools would have at least one search. It's conducted prior to school. It's videotaped. Those videotapes are archived. So, if there's a question that comes up about the search, then we can go back to the archives to look. Again, the school's resource officer at that school does not participate in the search. And it's based on the student volume. The larger the number of students, the, the increase in the randomness of the search, I guess. Just for example, it could be the sergeant in charge of the search would say, we're gonna search every fourth, sixth, 10th, 15th student or whatever. And again, the larger the number of, the number of students, the end, the fewer searches that would be, be conducted. The, as the students are selected, they're wanded with a handheld magnetometer. They're asked to empty pockets and backpacks are searched. And the entire search takes about 30 minutes. So, again, the, the randomness is gonna be from the standpoint that the sergeant chooses a number that we've searched, you know, the students that come through. So, that helps to ensure the randomness of the search. And again, I think if there's ever a question about it, like I say, those, those videotapes are archived and we could go back and look at a specific search. And, and I think in the number of years we've been doing this, I think there was, there's been one occasion that we had to go back and, and look at a, a search, a particular search, and, and the, whatever the accusation there was, was unfounded based on that videotape. So, it's, it's been relatively smooth process that we've done over the last number of years. So, I don't know if you have more specific questions or not.
No, that was perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to know the why and how.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Yes, I've got a question related to lines 37 through 40. That from my understanding of the law, Mr. Dupler, in order for us to approve a policy like this, there has to be cause within the community. And so, those lines obviously speak to that cause where it says that there's a significant increase in the use of firearms in the commission of crimes, a state of our local law enforcement, in the greater community, and continuing discovery of controlled substances. So, for me, what I want to be unsure of as a board member acting in good faith is that I don't just believe that to be true, but I know that to be true. And so, if we can speak to what is happening right now in our community that says this is something that we need to have in place, that would be fantastic.
Chief Produces, would you like to come forward? Thank you. You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Well, I will tell you, when we, when we make decisions about crime and the perception of crime, there's really three areas that we focus on. Number one is just the communication with our law enforcement partners and all the different ways that you can communicate. And of course, we pay attention to what they tell us. We also pay attention to what is released publicly, provided it's from reputable sources. And probably within the last three or four weeks, KPD released some information publicly that said the homicide rate for 2020 was going to exceed the, the individual totals for the last five years. And so, I will tell you, in 2018, KPD had eight, or had 20 homicides. 2019, they had 21 homicides. And so far through the end of November of this year, they've had 31 homicides. And so, you look at, you look at what you're getting from your, your law enforcement partners. Then you're looking at the facts, and the facts are always helpful. But, but probably the most telling piece is the perception of our principals, the perception of our school community, and fear, and the perception of fear. I know within the last two months, I have had conversation with three different principals that have called us and asked for extra security because of unrest that was happening among their school community or the community in which their school sits. As, as many of you will know, we've had several of our students that had either been shot in the last 60, 90 days. We've had several of our students that have been at least accused of being the shooter. Some is young, as 12. And so, we know the homicide rate is up inside the city. And I'm not picking at schools inside the city, but that's the data that I've been able to gather the last day or so. And then also, if you, if you dig a little deeper into the statistical number on the crime, particularly as it relates to violence, aggravated assaults are gonna be up in 2020. Simple assaults are gonna be up in 2020. The data that we collect from our schools about assaults and fights are going to be up. And of course, part of the focus of, of the rewording, if you will, of this particular policy, particularly as it relates to drug paraphernalia, is the focus on the vaping issue. And we know that's a huge issue. And the district has sent, spent considerably resources on trying to get a handle on the vaping issue. And, and last year, our numbers, and we don't have a lot of historical data, cause we just started focusing last year on the specifics of vaping, but we had 166 reports of vaping. And so far this year, keeping in mind, we got a late start to the year, only two-thirds of our kids are attending school. We're at about 59 reports in which children are, have been involved in vaping. So, certainly the numbers would tell us that we've had a violent year. And again, I think most importantly, the perception of many folks in our community is that right now, as wonderful a community as we have in Knoxville, it, it has become a little bit more dangerous than it has been in years past. And we know anything that happens in the community touches a school. And so, we're very sensitive to that.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else, Mr. Watson?
No. Chief Produces, thank you so much for digging into that. And if there's a, I know you had limited time to ascertain some of that information. But if there's a way to access some of that information for the county as a whole, I, I think the board would appreciate that since this is a county-wide policy.
Yes, sir. We, we have a request into the sheriff's office.
Yes.
And so, we, we will try to gather that information certainly before next Wednesday.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Moving on to grants. Any questions on A or B? Mr. Watson, did you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, C or D? Ms. Owen?
I, I actually have a question on A.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Looking, looking at the amount of this grant that is for other supplies and materials, could we have some clarification on what those other supplies and materials might entail?
Sure.
For the safe schools grant.
Ms. Cook is here. Thank you, Ms. Cook. Thank you, Ms. Cook.
So you're looking at the $700,000. So we have $321,000 that is for blast resistant windows and doors, which 250,000 of that was from last year. We had a contract that we put out to bid, and there were some problems with getting it fulfilled. And it's carried on actually from last year, so that was part of the carryover money. Looking at what security is doing for this year to support security, we're looking at 200,000 on directional signage. So that's a big chunk of money for our schools. Plus, we also have to provide some for our charter schools. The rest of the money is capturing kids' hearts. We're looking at that program for 21,000 and 30,000 for Why Try? And then 15 and a half thousand for Project U. So those are the schools, the Project U programs within the middle and high schools. And then we have Chromebooks for our security officers because a lot of the work that they do, the threat assessments and things are online now. So we have Chromebooks for them. And then we have some laptops for our restorative learning behavioral liaison staff. Then we have $10,000 for some adjustments to our bullying workflow, which is in Aspen. So we've had them go back in and work on Aspen so that we make sure that we're in compliance with all the laws for bullying. And the last thing is we have $35,000 for school culture, just supplies and purchases for a variety of software, some security supplies, social skills programs. That's, we haven't really defined that at this point, but as we go through the year, we'll see what we need to use that money for.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Ms. Cook, sorry. Just related to the Project U program that you mentioned, is that the one that got started at Harden Valley?
Yes.
And how many of our high schools and middle schools is that in now?
So it's in, it's in all the high schools and middle schools.
All of them, okay, very good, thank you. I also have a question for Mr. McPherson related to the matching. I think you're probably the best qualified here. I think it'd be good for the board to understand how in both A and C, how those grants get matched.
Well, I would actually need to look at the backup on that. Typically, when we have a match, a match, it's either an in-kind or it's from the general purpose. So I may have to, I may have to.
Well, I actually, I mean, I know the answer, I called and asked, but I think it would be good for the board to know at all that in Grant A, from my understanding, that's fully matched by in-kind services provided directly from those departments, where we're not paying for their services in the schools. But then in C, it's actually a ratio where we're funding that percentage out of our budget and then the grant is taking up the rest of that, that it's actual dollars, correct?
Right, that's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Cook, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I was just going to answer for the matching for the sheriff's department and the KPD. So it's like 600,000, I mean, there's salaries.
Thank you. Okay, great. Okay, do we have any questions on Grant C or D? Okay, E? Okay, this, Mr. Dupler, would you like to weigh in on E? Because this is one that you have not signed off on. Rosetta Stone?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just, I was just trying to pull it up. My computer's off slow tonight for some reason, I don't know. What, no, 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 it's okay. It may be affected by COVID, I don't know. You know, but what happened on this one, so there's a lot of, no, I won't say a lot, but there's usually two situations when the law department won't sign off on a contract for the board. One is, falls in this category, or this contract falls in the first category, which is it's one that's not, that's not preferred. In other words, it doesn't have the terms that we expect to be in a, you know, in a contract that are, that's going to work the best for the school system. That usually means, well, it may be a choice of law that we, that we, a jurisdiction that we don't go to or have a license to practice in. It could be that the, you know, there's an indemnification provision that we simply can't, you know, comply with for whatever reason. So it's one that the board can still go forward with, but when we don't sign off on it, I think what we're saying there is proceed with caution, beware. Then there's also the other category, which is where we feel that a contract is simply, well, a contract or an agreement or whatever it is is simply illegal. I mean, I mean, there's just no way for the board to go forward legally. So again, this one falls in the first category. I believe when I reviewed this, had some, had some concerns about the fact that the board would be locked in to using Rosetta Stone, and it was going to be ongoing. I'm sorry, do you, I mean, do you have my notes as well, Terry, or is that not?
I think that's, I think that's the question that, you know, that I had was whether, and maybe Mr. Isak could be the better one to discuss that, but whether this would obligate us to further purchases or anything like that. Dr. Isak, do you have any information on that?
Well, and I'll let Dr. Isak go ahead and talk about it, but I mean, I'm kind of recalling it as well. I mean, so what happens is, so when you start using Rosetta Stone, Rosetta Stone has a completely separate set of documents that are all online that are then brought into this document. So you don't even see all the documents. So I mean, Rosetta Stone has its own privacy policy, and it has its own terms and conditions. And certainly, those terms and conditions had had some of the things that I'm talking about. Different jurisdictions, confidentiality probably wasn't a problem. I mean, again, I'm just trying to go by memory, but I'm sure indemnification was a problem. Arbitration was a problem and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Isak?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So that's my recollection, too, Mr. Dupler, so we talk through that. So what's in the grant itself is Westview would receive a $5,000, $5,000 to use to support their ELL students, which they're working with Enos Lester, our ELL supervisor, to build that out and to have some curriculum options for the ELL students there at Westview. But another part of that grant is they do receive a year of Rosetta Stone that's valued at, sounds like a game show, but it's valued at $12,500 for them to have access to that for the year. And then our understanding is if they chose to use their dollars to re-up that, they could. But they get one year's kind of free use of that. And I think again, as Mr. Dupler said, that was the, that kind of secondary contract was the one and the language in it to use Rosetta Stone. But there's no obligation to continue, it just gives them a year, a year to be able to do that and also get the $5,000 grant to support their students.
Okay, thank you. Any, Ms. Satterfield?
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up. I just want to see if there's any other reservations from board members because then that will be a conversation with the principal to see what other platforms that they possibly can use or opportunities. Because I know we can pass it as a board, but if there's, if it won't, then I'd like to know so we can prepare.
Ms. Owen?
I guess I'm a little confused in looking at the contract because it seems that it's a grant, but then when we open the documentation, we're looking at an educator of the year contest. So how does this all work together?
Dr. Isak, would you have any information on that piece of it?
So, thank you, Ms. Owen. My understanding is that this was an application for the teacher to apply for those types of things, like as a, I think you're correct, and it was a teacher of the year. I think we received up to a $7,500 one for their school, for their students. And I think in this case, the teacher was a runner-up or that second tier for 5,000. And that was part of the grant that was being rewarded, excuse me, grant being awarded to them to use for their students as well as they got the full year to use Rosetta Stone.
Okay. So when they applied for the grant, did our grants office, did it go through our grants office? Did it go through us at all?
Looks like on this one, I'd have to double check to make sure that, yeah, it did. Ordinance has signed off on it as well, our grant supervisor. So it says here that each runner-up would receive, each runner-up prize would consist of a $5,000 grant awarded in the form of a check made payable to the winner educators, school of employment intended to be used for the school for enhancing their ELL programming, and also the Rosetta Stone program for one year. So I think they applied with the grant for that and the teacher's name. And being a runner-up, those were the two things that were awarded for that. It did go through our grant office.
So if I understand correctly, the teacher applied for a grant with the approval of our grant office that was signed off on.
Correct.
The teacher won the second place grant. And so now we are approving the acceptance of the grant. So she would not get that grant if we don't approve it.
Correct, and that's exactly, so the grant office works in both ways. Sometimes they find grants that make sense for schools, that that makes sense, that would fit that description. And then there are other times when a teacher or a student or a school or a teacher may reach out. I can't talk tonight. And this was a case where I think it was the teacher who did it and reached out to our grant department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dupler, do you want to go ahead? Go ahead, Mr. Watson?
You might answer my questions.
Okay, okay. Well, and I was just going to offer some further clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair. Oftentimes, what falls into category one are grants because, I mean, even grants from Walmart, for instance, have provisions in them that, choice of law and things like that, that are not preferred terms for the school district. But our office takes the position, okay, you know, this is a grant, and if it's used for the intended purposes, if it's used according to the terms of the agreement, then you can take it or leave it. I mean, you can go ahead and, you know, and take it on those terms. But if something goes wrong, the teacher or the principal or the school just has to realize, hey, you know, we may just have to, you know, call it off at this point. I mean, if everything goes wrong. But fortunately, that doesn't happen very often. And, you know, like I said, this board has approved numerous grants similar to this. Like I say, I think Walmart's a prime example, but they're not the only ones that the board would say, okay, let's go forward with the understanding that, of this is what it is, type of thing.
Okay, Mr. Watson, did that answer your question? Okay, so, okay, any other? So Ms. Satterfield, to answer your question, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to make sure that the board knows that Mr. Dupler had not signed off on it. And I wanted to make sure we weren't obligated to any of the purchases or anything like that. So congratulations to this teacher. Okay, any questions on F? Okay, moving to contracts, questions on A? B?
I have a question on B.
Uh huh, go ahead.
So I think, I could be wrong, I didn't count, but I think this was the most pages of documentation that we had of any other line item. And the only thing that I was curious about in that is that the $1.2 million, is that for the total five years or is that just per year potentially? And then the other question is, I know this is representing three different companies, how many printers are we talking about here?
Mr. McPherson, would you like to come and speak to that? Thank you.
It was a tremendous amount of documentation.
Right, I had to get the exact number on the printers there because there's different types, right? And it's district-wide. So the $1.2 million, that's for an annual cost. So it was time to rebid this. And so it went through procurement, it was evaluated, there were several different evaluators. And these were the winning vendors. And what was very attractive to us is that it looks like we're projecting actually a savings, a reduction in the budget. We don't get that quite often, but it's about $175,000. But I'll get a total number of the number of printers that this would affect. But it involves different types and the different ones in the schools, we'll get that.
I'm just curious, I think whenever the public sees $1.2 million for printers, they're like, whoa, is that for like two printers or is that?
Right, and it's district-wide, too. And so we're talking about all the schools. And so we'll, obviously, when we exchange those printers, our folks from the business office will go out and then they'll help, you know, get those things, train the folks and, you know, offer some support there because anytime you change something out, yeah.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, questions on C? D? Okay, and then moving to, we just have one regular agenda item, the legislative priorities for 2021. And so basically, we took last year's priorities, and let me just pull this up. I know I asked Mr. McPherson to give us some language on holding, what we would want to say regarding holding districts harmless regarding the EP, since that's a concern for going into the next budget cycle. So that was added. And then Ms. Owen updated some language on the teacher performance evaluation. I think that was the bulk of that. And that, and otherwise, other than I think those two things, it's very similar to last year. There were just some minor grammatical changes in addition. Ms. Owen, would you like to speak to the teacher performance evaluation piece of it?
Sure, the part that I added is just the last three sentences from where it says teacher evaluation scores should be decoupled from student testing. And really, that's based on all these past years of not having scores in time. This is also something that is a legislative priority for TSBA. So I just tried to put that language in there to, you know, to best show what we really meant there.
Okay. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we ever get responses when we send this? I'm just curious.
I've had some discussions.
Discussions, okay.
You know, typically, we do meet with our legislative delegation in January before they go back into session. And we tend to have the same conversation every January. So we'll do that, we'll plan to do that again. And so this would be a guide for that conversation and a guide for as legislation comes up, you know, you can speak to, I think part of the purpose of this would be so that you can speak on behalf of, you can really speak on behalf of the board if the board has approved this versus just an individual board member advocating for something if our board has approved it. If we don't approve this, then you could not do that. Do you think that's accurate?
I think so.
Okay.
What I found very helpful, there, we know that there are some legislators who have very strong opinions on some things. And sometimes, sometimes with those legislators, I just dropped off a copy for them to have at their leisure. Lots of new legislators, this was very good to have to open a conversation about where we were because their boards back home were telling them the same thing. And so it was useful, I think, for that conversation with new legislators especially, so that they could see where school boards across the state were looking at the same concerns.
Yes, very good point. So we do need to, I'm assuming the board would be open to trying to get together with our legislative delegation before they go into session for 2021. Would you guys be willing to do that again? So we'll work on getting a date on the calendar for hopefully the first week in January or so, first or second week in January, so that we can just touch base. And we do have some new delegates and new legislators that we could meet with. And so this could frame some of that conversation. So any other questions on or comments on this? Okay. Okay, and we have anyone from public forums? Okay, and do we have anyone for public forums? Madam Chair, we have no one for public forum tonight. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move to board forum. Any comments for board forum? Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question. I know we've received some updates on the budget and there was an article recently that our state tax is doing really well. And so I was wondering if we could add to the agenda a discussion on where we are with our budget and when or if we could afford to reinstate the 4% salary increases that we promised teachers in June. I know understandably that got tabled for the time being, but I know that our budget, and I think, is doing better than we projected. So I was wondering, can we add that to the agenda or how does, how does that work? Thank you.
Okay. We can, we can look at probably adding that for January.
Okay.
I'm not sure if we would want to add that for next week unless the board would want to do that. It, for, that's for short notice for the staff, but we can definitely, yeah, we can look at, we can look at that for January and, does that sound agreeable, gentlemen? Mr. Superintendent, would you prefer to look at that in January?
Yes, ma'am, that'd probably be better. That would give us a chance to get one more data point, I think, for December, the December sales taxes, which
Right.
Probably be around the 18th through the 20th.
Yeah, we would have a little more information by then.
Well, I say December, but that's, of course, two months prior to December, but it's one more data.
For October.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Thomas. I will remind the board that there is, Monday, there is a joint education committee meeting and with, with the board and the commission, and there is an item on there specifically in reference to the, to budget update. So we're also going to give a update based on what we know after three data points. But I think Mr. Thomas is right, the more, the more we can get under our belt, then the better information that, that we will have. But anyway, just a reminder.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Don't run off there, Mr. McPherson.
That's what he told me in the second grade.
I know everybody would like to, to give 4%, and maybe we can. But we talked a little bit, I think it was last month or maybe, maybe the month before, about how these, the sales tax is just knocking it out of the park compared to what expectations had been. But we don't have any assurance that at some point, you know, all good things come to an end, as they say, but we might be able to look at a, a bonus possibly.
We, we are still, you know, looking at, at all the different options. I can say that, so through three data points, we, and when I say that, I mean, through September, July, August and September, so through the first quarter, we're running about 14% over budget. We are about 7% more than actual collections from the prior year, although I will add that the prior year up through September did not include the, the internet, you know, the, when the law went into effect about the internet sales. So I think we get a better comparison, you know, beginning in October and on, when I say October, we run, keep in mind, we run two months behind, right? So it takes about two months before it, it lands in our, in the coffers, so we can look at the, look at the numbers. So yes, it is significant, the sales tax is significantly better. Economists are also predicting a strong Christmas retail spending, right? So that I think is in our favor. The, the struggle that we're having right now is with an eye towards next year's budget, right? Because, keep in mind, there's a lot of, a considerable amount of items that we actually pull back on. There were some unmet needs, departmental needs, we'll, we'll need to take a look at those again. There are some, what we called reallocations where we could actually, we did some creative budgetary programming with, with some items that we could fund through grants, you know, through like Title I that, that will not be available to us this year or the upcoming year. There are some things that we, we cut, and so we will need to look at, you know, is there any room to restore that? Obviously, salary increases are always rise to the top of the things that we want to look at first. One-to-one initiative, I'm just doing this off the top of my head. So, you know, we funded largely early on in phase one for the device costs through, through federal dollars, through the CARES Act primarily, and through the remote learning grant, which is also federal dollars come through the state. At some point, we'll have to look at how we can strategically program that into our budget because that's a recurring cost. So I will say that, yes, it's very encouraging how the revenue looks, but I would, I would, you know, guard all of us to not look at this as if it's some sort of a windfall because there are, you know, considerable number of needs that we will have to grapple with in, in next year's budget. So we're looking at a lot of things, but as Mr. Thomas said, you know, the, the more data you can get under your belt, the better. And, and I will say this, that in, in July, when the first data point came in, which would have been September, the, the, it was significantly higher sales tax-wise than what we had projected, had budgeted. And it's like $32 million. We didn't put a lot of, we didn't rely on that number a lot because it was just one data point, you know, and there's a lot that can happen after that. So the, the more data you get in, the, the more reliable the numbers become usually. And so for August, when those numbers were posted, which is the last number that we shared with the board, was like about 23 million, right? And when I say 23 million, I'm saying by the end of the year, this is what the trend data would suggest where the numbers would land, $23 million surplus. So just this week, we got more information, we ran the numbers. In fact, we were, we were just trying to finalize some of this just this afternoon. And so we were going to send to the, send this information to the board once we got it finalized within, at the end of the week, but I'm speaking off the top of my head right now where I think the numbers landed. It's down to about $22 million surplus. So what I'm saying is, is that the more data points we get, while the news is still encour, excuse me, encouraging, it's actually reducing. So, so the thing we have to understand is, is if it continues to reduce, while I still expect there to be a surplus at the end of the year barring some unforeseen circumstance, that, that the numbers are, are, you know, the, the good, it's still good news, but the good news is, is not as, not as good as it was a couple of months ago, right? So I just, I'm just saying that as I think we have to be really, really cautious about, you know, how we, how we approach going forward throughout the year and, and with an eye towards next year's budget to do.
That's, you said it well, and that's, that was the point, you know, I'm not against us giving a raise, but the only reason I even mentioned a bonus is a raise has to be factored in from now on in, in every time we do a budget. A bonus does not, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. But along the lines of what you were talking about, I'm not really too concerned about through the end of this calendar year. It's about February and March that I think we may see a, when it drops, it may come down almost as quickly as it shot up.
Yeah, we just don't know.
I mean, I know, you know, I can't predict that, but I do think you have to at least stop and think, you know?
Right.
And it depends on, you know, what's going on nationally and at state level and everything. But I just want to point out and make sure that everybody on the board understood that, about this reoccurring deal
Yes, sir.
That once we lock in on something like that, we have to
We're committed from then on.
Right, and, and you and I talked about some of these other reoccurring things.
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad you mentioned that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One question. When the internet sales tax, when was it added? When did it, when was the first month that it was added in?
Octo, I believe it was October of 2019.
Okay, so we'll get to comp.
So in December, so later on this month, we should have October's numbers for this year, which will be a pretty good comparison, you know, because we're looking at apples and apples.
Gotcha. And so the trend, does it take that into account?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. So yeah, so next, we'll, we'll look to do that in January and have a comprehensive update and, okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, anything else from the board? Okay, we are adjourned.